Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Heather, would you please take the roll call? Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Public comments, we have none. Citizens' comments on agenda-related items.
We have a addendum, Mayor, that we need to do first.
Okay. Is this for the Labor Fest?
Yes.
Okay. So, can't we go ahead with council or citizens' comments first?
No, we need to have a motion to amend the agenda first.
I need a motion to amend the agenda to include, under notices, communications, and announcements, consideration of the Labor Fest event scheduled for Saturday, September 3rd, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., Sunday, September 4th.
I'll make the motion.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Hi, I'm Stain. I'm on the board.
Okay. Councilmember Grabowski. Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. All right, citizens' comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items only. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Do we have any citizens who'd like to come forward? Moving on. Consent agenda. All agenda items marked with asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to the approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: Approval of minutes, Cash balances, Revenue and expenses, Payroll, Invoices, Investment report, Consideration of tax amendments to zoning ordinance, Notification regarding next study session, Consideration of the American Legion auxiliary poppy distribution, And C, consideration of the Labor Fest event scheduled for Saturday, September 3rd, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., Sunday, September 4th. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. New business. Consideration of a change order for engineering services for the wastewater improvements Phase II projects. Various delays have occurred during the construction of the wet weather control projects referred to as RD2A&amp;B. Permitting of a railroad crossing and material delivery delays have impacted the start and completion date of both projects. This has resulted in additional construction administration being required. The engineers have estimated the impact at two months and have requested a change order to their contract. The total requested totals $70,000 and will be covered by loan proceeds. At this time, council could take action to approve $70,000 change order for the construction administrative fees with the Spicer Group and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to owner-engineer agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion?
That comes out of the bond money, correct?
Correct.
Is that in the packet we had, bond money?
Yes, that's correct.
Is this $70,000 still within what we anticipated our budget amount would be? It just shifted categories a little bit? That's what it looked like when I looked at the numbers and the backup?
It does. The engineering services agreement covered both contracts A&amp;B. Contract A is the conveyance of new 48-inch sewer. The contract B is for the headworks. So, they started at different times, they were delayed, but they're dependent on each other. So, we've been tracking the costs all through the project and have issued change orders accordingly. We're now at the point in the contract where the contingency monies that we have budgeted, we are actually working on change orders to approve those. So, the $70,000 that is proposed is still within the loan proceeds.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? I think we're ready for a vote.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving an invasive plant control agreement with the Grand Travis Conservation District regarding invasive species control. For the past six years, the city has entered into a contract with Grand Travis Conservation District to assist with invasive species removal along Veterans Oak, Rogue Drive, the Riverwalk, and other areas, in addition to treating phragmites at Manmade Lake. The program has been very effective for the community. At this time, council could take action to approve the invasive plant control agreement with Grand Travis Conservation District for treatment until 2022 and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second?
Thank you. Discussion?
Can you... What did it wear?
I'm Jeff.
Yeah, when the invasive species, invasive species number Conservation District came to us six years ago, there was no cost to the program. They're funded under different grants and different state allocations. However, we had been paying a contractor $1,800 a year to treat the phragmites at Manmade Lake. We required with them and asked if they would provide those services. So, they have agreed to treat the phragmites. The city pays them the $1,800 that we would pay a contractor, and then the rest of the treatments we get at no cost. And that is a budget that I... In your budget? Yes.
How many treatments do they give us a year, Jeff?
I think the phragmites might be twice a year. And the Japanese knot wood is the other significant one that they do, and that's once a year, usually early September. You can definitely see a difference on Veterans Oak Road Drive. I mean, they're gone. There's a huge difference on Veterans from when they first came in. I mean, on the Riverwalk. They've had to treat that every year. The stuff by the switchback on the Riverwalk, we'll continue to treat that. There's a new colony that just popped up near the routine wall at First Street, where we just repaired the Riverwalk there. So, we've added that to their list. And if anybody else sees stuff that's in the community and on public land, we can add that to the list. If anybody has private stuff, they contracted at very low cost to do private stuff as well. So, a good example of that is, there was quite a bit along the Riverwalk behind the old House of Flavors, but the land is actually owned by a little group, and they paid a very small amount to have that.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? No discussion? Okay. I think we're ready for a vote.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing submission of a Resilient Lakeshore Heritage Grant for the restoration of the pillars and main facade at the Ramsdale Theater. The State Historic Preservation Office has created a grant program for small lakeshore communities called the Resilient Lakeshore Heritage Grant Program. The program has very specific requirements, and the city's Ramsdale Theater meets those. The grant request is for funds to rehabilitate the pillars and main interest facade. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution authorizing submission of a Resilient Lakeshore Heritage Grant for the restoration of the pillars and main facade at the Ramsdale Theater. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Do we have a picture of what they're going to do? Are they going to change the steps? Is it going to be easier to get in there for people that struggle with walking?
Mayor, this grant is only to restore what's there, so as you know, the pillars are in a pretty significant state of deterioration, as well as some of the portable water. So, we're rehabilitating that whole area. Access issues are being studied in the other grant that we have that's a current of the SHPO, which is the master plan agreement facility access grant. And there'll be some recommendations for access improvements through that, but we'll need to find out.
Okay. That's what I was concerned about, having a ramp or something that would be making...
There's a group down there that was looking over here a while back. They had somebody looking at their...
Well, SHPO is the state agency. There's a granting agency for the grant that we currently have, this one. The architects from Chicago are probably the group that you're referring to. They're doing the master plan update that we're in.
I saw somebody over there looking, measuring.
Yeah, they've been over quite a bit, so.
So, I take it this is really like only Phase 1 of what their recommendations are? Will there be more? Because this is a matching grant, is it not?
Yes, it is. And we have, I think, $35,000 already in the budget for this, so we're trying to log our exits. It's probably not going to be more than that, or still come out in cost estimates. The facility plan that they're doing is probably, I don't know, about a hundred or two million, two and a half million to finish the facility. So, this is just an opportunistic opportunity to get a good grant because it's more narrow in focus, and I think they have a strong management department.
Right. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
I'm glad that we qualified.
We're ready for the roll call vote. Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Compensation Commission, Harbor Commission, Historic District Commission, Peg Commission, and the Tree Commission. Mayor and manager appointments require a motion, second, and council voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominee until one nominee receives a majority vote. The following applications have been received. From the Historic District Commission, one vacancy, term ending 2/28/23. Applicants must be city residents. Purpose: Historic preservation. Council appointment: Angie Quinn, 268 First Street.
I'd like to make a nomination for Angie Quinn, 268 First Street. Second, for the one vacancy.
Term ending. Can you say, put the term in there, term ending 2/28?
Pardon me?
Can you put the term in there, term ending 2/28/23?
I can also make Angie Quinn, 268 First Street, for the vacancy term ending 2/28/23.
Thank you.
And second.
Thank you. All right. Any discussion? I must say, it's one of the best resumes I've seen to be on the Historic Commission. So, I'm pleased that she's reapplying. Okay. I think we're ready.
Okay. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Nomination approved.
Peg Commission, three vacancies. Two terms ending 12/31/23, and one term ending 12/31/24. Applicants must be Manistee County residents. Purpose: Overseas operation of the Manistee Public Access. Council appointment.
I make a, I'd like to nominate Jonathan Hanson, 356 Third Street, for the one vacancy ending 12/31/24.
One second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Nomination approved.
Thank you. All right, we now come to concerns and comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. State your name and your address, please.
Ms. Pratt, 355 Second Street. Good evening. I come tonight for council with some concerns. I recently attended the work session on August 9th. Well, to say the least, I was shocked by the comments that were made. So, let me get one thing clear. The Jefferson Community Park Committee, I am a member of that. I know that was questioned. I didn't answer that because there wasn't public comment. I'm not ashamed of that. That's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, community nonprofit. Questions were asked of if I invited city council to a meeting that I recently had. I didn't. It wasn't open to the public. It was just people that had signed petition. But if you're willing to be invited, I can include you. I also didn't include the city manager, to be honest. When I reached out to the city manager before, I think we all know that he hung up the phone on me. And I also reached out twice after I got the letter running for city council about, would you like to stop by and have coffee? I left messages with his office, and I kind of received a call back. So, to be honest, I didn't know how much I should push that issue. Mr. Shemansky, to be quite frank with you, you should be quite ashamed of yourself and your comment about the citizens of that neighborhood and those individuals that have parks for lawns that feel that they're entitled to another park. It's not a neighborhood issue. It's a community issue. None of us are expecting the city to take over that park or maintain that park. We're not asking the city to acquire the property. We're willing to do that as a group. This is a school issue, as Councilmember Lundberg mentioned. And as a school administrator, having school law degrees, I can tell you that this isn't a council issue at this point in time. It's up to the school to decide what to do with that property. I'm going to let other people talk tonight about that, but I personally believe that you owe an apology to this community for those comments. But I know that your attorney, Mr. Saylor, is going to tell you that we don't ask for apologies from council members. Because when I reached out in the past, there was another council member that decided to write an email that was slanderous, alleging that I had a business dealing with them, but I never did. And I asked the mayor to address that, and when I brought it to the attorney's attention, he told me it was too much to ask for somebody to apologize. So, I'm going to focus tonight on why I'm running for city council. I chose to run for city council because I see that there's a need in this community. Amongst this council, I don't even know that we have a clear vision or a clear mission statement. A sense of community goes a long ways. We need to work together to unite people rather than divide them. Everything is about relationships. People will forgive you for things that you don't know or misdeals if they feel that they're being hurt and they're being valued as community members. That doesn't happen currently. We need to set aside our personal interests to look out for what is the best for this community. We need to be emotionally mature and in check. These recordings are quite astounding when you look at things. I really appreciate Councilmember Grabowski asking questions all the time, but the facial expressions by some people is not respectful. We need to be approachable. We need to be critical thinkers and think outside the box. We need to show up and be prepared. We need to be financially responsible. I'd like to ask how many people reach out to people within their district or their community when we make decisions? Personally, I've never been asked, what do you think on this matter, by any council member tonight. I've personally reached out to my council members several times, and I've been more than dismayed with the response that I've gotten. That's the only thing I can really say on that. So, what I'd like to focus on is how we're going to move forward, and I think that we need to start prioritizing things. If the city wants to get involved in housing, I see that there's definitely a need for housing in this community. But I don't think that we can take on more than what we already have when we can't maintain what we have. So, when I've been out talking to the community members and gathering the signatures for my petition, there's great concerns about the management of the DPW and great concerns about the city manager and the lack of communication. I've asked what the communication expectations are. Haven't gotten that. I asked about an ethics complaint. I was told by Mayor Beaton that I'd be followed up with. She's not contacting me at all. I was very happy to hear Mrs. Lundberg ask about the status of the complaint complementing, but a little dismayed that we have to do that through a third party. We should be able to handle that internally. So, I have two other concerns.
Mr. Pratt, your five minutes is up. Thank you very much for your comments. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to come forward?
Hi, my name is Ruth Pratt. I live at 463 Fourth Street, and I'm here on behalf of my neighbor, Jody Picardi. For any of you who don't know Jim and Jody Picardi, they're the original owners of Lighthouse Brewery downtown where the Blue Fish is now. They're the ones that, a long time ago, fixed up that building. So, here's what she's wrote. Dear Mayor Beaton and council members, My name is Jody Picardi, and my husband Jim and I have owned his great-grandmother's home here in Manistee for over 25 years. It's been in the family since 1936. My father-in-law Dale Picardi was the community development director for the city of Manistee. Two of the many projects he was responsible for are the Riverwalk, which we all love, and the Catwalk to the Lighthouse. Dad was also the official grant writer for the city and was very successful in financing all of the wonderful development projects for Manistee. Jim and I helped the Manistee senior softball team pick up trash at least twice a year from Myers all the way to the casino. You will find us at baseball fields, as well as three days a week with the team for some great softball. You will also find me, William Blasen Boulevard, whenever I get a chance. We love participating with our community and helping out our fellow neighbors whenever we can. So, you can see that our family has been a very active part of the city of Manistee. We love promoting the history, beauty, and wonderful sights and activities our city has to offer to those who are visiting our city. The reason I've written this letter is to ask for your help in maintaining accessibility and the beauty of one of the most historical and used streets in Manistee. I am reaching to Fourth Street. Fourth Street has become more and more a high-traffic area. Cars, GPS, FedEx trucks, as well as our trolley. We feel it would be advantageous to install a traffic vehicle counter so that you can know firsthand the amount of traffic that we incur on a daily basis. The trolley comes right in front of our house several times a day, and we are always excited to see it and wave to the tourists visiting our beautiful and inviting city. I do, however, feel embarrassed when I see them jostled and bounced around when they go by due to the conditions of the street. That is not so inviting nor beautiful. I do know that there have been patches done in the areas of the street, and until very recently, an area in front of our home has been exposed. Sections of the original and historic brick are showing on the street. It would be a wonderful draw for tourists and potential homebuyers to have Fourth Street put back to its original brick. The brick streaks could be a key component to the city's character and enhance the beauty of our city even further. We are just asking to at least be put on the list to have this area resurfaced in the future. We thank you for your time and consideration and do hope that you will be able to assist us in maintaining the beauty of our city's historical Fourth Street. And then she's attached three pictures on the back. I, alone as a neighbor, know that our street used to be in great shape until all that curbing was done on First Street, and all those big trucks came through, and they would come through and go down Fourth Street and come around. And our street, of course, by the courthouse, that's always kept up pretty immaculately because nobody, you know, they get a lot of visitors and people notice it. But ours, part of that plot, since that big production was done when all the curbing was put down there on First Street and all that, has never been repaired. It was in pretty good shape until that happened, but with those big trucks coming through, it just tore it up. And we would just like to have somebody, you know, somehow get us on the list. I know it's needed all over town, but it is really bad there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Sammy Lucas Gavitz. I live at 315 Fifth Ave.
Just a second.
Could you speak a little, maybe the microphone?
Hang on. I got to start my timer. Okay. Please go ahead.
Now it'll be five minutes, but I'm Sammy Lucas Gavitz. I'm at 315 Fifth Ave. I should watch condominiums, and I'm the new executive director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. A month and one week in, and it's my first city council meeting, so I appreciate the opportunity to meet everybody, and I've met a couple of you along the way, but I really look forward to working with everybody to promote Manistee County and tourism.
Hang on.
Paul Racy, I used to be a nuclear missileer, so I'm going to be a top-line partner.
I'm so sorry. Can't get it started right. Okay. Go. I'm sorry.
Good evening, ma'am. Brian Mount, 536 Fourth Street. A Manistee native, who just returned after 26 years of adventuring with the Air Force and serving our country. My family and I were able to return in part thanks to that amazing woman over there who found us a place to live, so thank you for that, ma'am. I'm here tonight because some of the comments that were made at last week's council had me concerned that the democracy that I was defending is now being undermined by misinformation. The first comment originated from Councilmember Shemansky right around the 45th minute, where he referred to myself and my neighbors as people who, quote, "who have yards that are already park-like and the size of a park wanting a private area to walk their dogs." I live there. The council member does not. I don't even own a dog. I've never met a neighbor who said, "I want my own private dog-walking area." Councilwoman Shemansky should apologize for stereotyping myself and my hard-working neighbors. I did not deploy to Afghanistan or serve as a U.S. rep in Beijing, China, so that I could return to Manistee and hear that one of my own representatives insults members of Manistee. You're supposed to be leaders and role models, not users of small-minded stereotypes. Additionally, numerous council members last week made statements such as, "There was never a promise for the Jefferson Green Space Park after the conclusion and demolition of the school," and tried to relabel it merely as a consideration or a proposal. In response to whether or not there was a promise, I would offer you the standard from the Air Force, where our first core value is integrity first. Integrity, honesty, and moral uprightness is essential for a military that employs you in life-threatening situations, and is also critical to the democratic process. What kind of integrity has occurred with messaging of the Jefferson Park Green Space Initiative and the request for more tax money from our taxpayers? We can examine some of the messaging evidence from the owners of the Jefferson property. Maps, website, screenshot, April 28th, 2021, a few weeks before the village vote was actually taken, and it speaks only of Jefferson as being a green space. taken, and it speaks only of Jefferson as being a green space, practice soccer field, and a park playground. After the vote was passed, website, June 12, 2021, suddenly we see words like "single-family housing" and "learning gardens" added to the website. Everybody has their standards of interpretation, but if this were the Air Force, changing on the message after the vote, that would not qualify as integrity. That looks a lot more like a bait-and-switch tactic and that's beneath what I remember in my small town. The messaging of housing appearing after the vote, that doesn't qualify as moral uprightness. It looks more like deceit disguised with the language of, "Well, technically it was in there on page 37." That's not the way we do treaties. Last week, one other council member offered the opinion that we do not need any more parks. Perhaps fair enough, and although this is a school board issue, factually speaking, if you as council members are concerned about the funding or paying of an additional green space, I hope you will consider reaching out to people such as Mr. Pratt, who can talk to you about the 501(c)(3) option that's being developed. This option would allow MAPS and the city to uphold their integrity and to fulfill that green space promise without logging the city down with more park maintenance concerns. Manistee deserves a fact-based set of leaders of integrity who speak the truth. Please ensure that the council holds to an ethical environment for discussion and uses facts when speaking of the Jefferson Green Space and my hard-working Manistee neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone.
Could I have your name and address, please?
Yes, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Brian Hostica, 1387 Whitehall Road, Whitehall, Michigan. I'm a Democratic nominee for the new 102nd district where we are right now. The new district extends from Manistee Township in the north along the lake shore to Whitehall in the south. Covers a lot of space. I'm a graduate of Whitehall Public Schools. I have two kids, a girl and a boy, they're 19 and 21 respectively, and they graduated from Whitehall High School. My parents owned and operated Dog and Sons in Montague, which is on the causeway between Whitehall and Montague for about 40 years. I grew up from a very young age working there, which I didn't much appreciate at the time, but I learned to appreciate it. I've also owned a small business, Dairy Tree in Whitehall, for about 10 years where we sold local dairy products. Right now, I'm a public defender in Muskeen County. Before that, I was a prosecutor for quite a few years in Muskeen County. And as a prosecutor, I'm a current member of the Fraternal Order of Police and I'm also the vice president of the Whitley Community Library. And I hope to have your support. I won't get into any issues now, but if I may, I have some cards. May I put them on the table over there? There's some information on how to reach me, if that's okay? There's a website, a phone number. I can't promise I'll answer the phone right away, but I do promise I'll call you back if you have any questions. The Facebook page says, "I like Brian Hostica. We changed the name. We thought Brian Hostica, the state representative, would be better, a little bit more specific." And that's probably the best way to find out where I stand at any particular issue. So, it's good to see you all. It's nice to see a city council meeting so well-attended. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Hang on, just a second.
I'm gonna use my timer.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor and council members. I'm Adely Ruddy and I live at 286 Fifth Avenue. And so, what I'm here about is I need some information. We have the blight issue that was established and so we are to call our district. And so, calls have been made and I'm just wondering, do we get a call back or do we just watch for our complaint to be rectified? Or where do these complaints go to? Do you hear about them or is it just the person that we are reporting to? I don't know if they're getting my complaint. There's been no callbacks. I don't see anything happening with the complaints. I don't know if any of you drive down Fifth Avenue, but I wish you would. The first three blocks really need some help. I've been here almost 10 years and, you know, I've got people coming and, I mean, don't you all care what your neighborhood looks like? I mean, I'm here yet tonight. So, I, I just, if somebody could get back with me, we have the blight and we have parking issues on Fifth Avenue. I just don't know what happens once, once we get the, once I turn off the lights. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
My name is John Beach. I live at 45 Oxford Court. Let's go.
Go ahead.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. May 2021, Manistee voters increased taxes on ourselves. We passed a MAPS village request. It passed by 81 yes votes. If there would have been 42 no votes instead of yes votes, the village would have failed to pass. In other words, the difference between passing and failing was just 42 votes. In the Jefferson district, the village passed by 112 votes. So, the Jefferson district carried the village. I voted yes. I was relieved to see a comprehensive and complicated plan to improve the learning environment for our children and remove buildings that have been vacant for years. I knew from previous experience, serving for many years on various boards and church council, that I could not know the details that led to the decisions that were proposed in the village. I was shocked to see that Jefferson School would be torn down. An architect's proposed plan for a park was presented as replacement for Jefferson School. Not ideal, but acceptable. I voted yes. I have not spoken to anyone who understood the replacement for Jefferson School was anything but a green space. I live one block from Jefferson School. People in the city council have inaccurately described property in the Jefferson School neighborhood to perpetuate an ugly stereotype of the people who live in that neighborhood. Such a mean and inaccurate description is easily dispelled. My next-door neighbor has a tiny house with no lot. Jefferson Playground is the only option for outdoor play when her grandchildren doesn't. Ask my neighbor, David Lockner, two houses away. Ask him how big his lot is. People in the city council have misread affected voters who increased taxes on themselves. Everyone in this room knows that a MAPS village would not have passed if it had become widely known that anything other than green space would be considered to replace Jefferson Elementary School. Citizens of Manistee voted to increase taxes on themselves. We did that. We voted to increase taxes. Then, some people in the city council disregarded the will of the voters and proceeded with their own agenda. And in insult to injury, some of the city council perpetuated ugly stereotypes about
Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward? See no more public comment. We'll move on to officials and staff. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. I was eager to hear from the candidates. I don't know if Mr. Pratt left a message, but I received messages from my office. Kelly does an excellent job of getting those. I did not receive that, but I'll look into that. Perhaps he didn't leave a voicemail. But anyway, some other items. 12th Street, I believe, is open today. Striped, I think contractor did an excellent job. Manistee Proud and DPW work together over by the Marina. They're working with seeds. I'd like to thank DPW for their work over there with the volunteers. I think it's, it's looking really good and if you get a chance to take a look, if you like it. And then Sands Park was also kind of refreshed a little bit. There were some tree branches blocking some signs. We trimmed those up. DPW repainted some areas, so it's looking good. So, just a couple of updates. Thank you.
Mr. Saylor.
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
See you again.
Thank you. Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. Mr. Bradford.
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
DPW Director Jeff McCullough.
Probably saw in the newspaper today, but we're happy to announce that the new headworks at the treatment plant went online yesterday. So, the majority of the flows for the city sewage are going through that plant. It's operating pretty well. There was a couple of things that were quite a little misquoted in the paper, so I just wanted to clarify it. That project's about 90% completed. In fact, we've determined that it's substantially complete because we are treating the sewage and it's operating as it was designed. The three storage tanks, 2 million gallons apiece, are fully operational. However, we had to fill them to their brink to test them and test the plant. So, we've got one of those tanks 100% drained and available if we have heavy rainfall needed for storage. Tank number two is probably down about a third and we're continuing to drain that and treat it through the plant on a daily basis. So, the longer we get sunshine, the more capacity we have for that wet weather. The other thing is on the conveyance project, we're about 90% complete with the 48-inch pipeline. So, because of that, we were able to tip the sewage into that new pipeline. It's flowing through about half of it right now. They have probably two and a half weeks left to do service tie-ins, some storm sewer work, and that final 48-inch tie-in and then close off the weir. And then, they expect that concrete work will start, curb and gutter, sidewalks, driveway approaches, and then we can pave and get that neighborhood back, back to normal. So, things are progressing very well. There is another part of the headworks project that has to be done and that is eliminating the Ethan Vine pump station. Right now, sewage is lifted up into the plant and with the new pipeline and the new headworks going online, there's no reason to have to pump and use energy to lift that sewage. It'll free flow into the new parts. So, we will have a closure at Ethan Vine for about a two-week period. And then, the contractor's planning to move to Quincy Street, so.
Jeff, was there an overflow on the weekend before you opened up that storage capacity?
There wasn't.
There wasn't? Okay, good. Lot of rain.
Lot of rain, but the system handles it pretty well when it's a steady rain. It's those really intense, short-duration rains that get into the system fast and overload us. But yeah, we did not have an overflow.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Chief Glass.
I don't hear anything.
City Engineer.
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Yes. Fire Chief.
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Who did I miss? Who did I miss? Anybody? Okay. All right. Councilmember Blackman.
Yeah, Jeff from school. I kind of lit that candle last at the meeting. When I asked to be updated, I kept in the loop on that. The meeting that people were going to, I was under impression by my neighbors walking by with a school board meeting. I did not know it was a private meeting. That's why I asked a question. We all got invited to a school board meeting, so clearly we were not invited at that meeting. I apologize. I forget that wrong. I also noted in the paper that the school board voted to abandon that option for housing. And it looks like the school board is looking to work with the 501(c)(3) and make that happen to a park. So, that's exciting to see that the school board are listening to the residents and the neighbors. So, there's some good in that project as well. So, all is not lost and all is not greater. So, I'm glad to see it moving forward. I'm glad to see the school board. And like we said to me last night, it's not a city council issue, but I want to be kept involved because my neighbors are wearing my lot size. And my grandkids go to Jefferson School to play. So, anyway, I appreciate that and thank you for all that work. And if I got that wrong, I apologize for getting that wrong. It wasn't my intention. I thought it was a school board meeting. So, that's all I got.
I just wanted to comment on the, I went to the Ramsdale showing of their master plan and that was, I thought, really great. What did you think? You were there too. Yeah, they did a really nice job and really thought through the details of Ramsdale and things that could make it better and still keep its historic look and things like that. I thought it was really well done and I'm glad that I got to be a part of it.
I, I got lost in my neighborhood. I'll call and tell you. It's funny. Mr. Kravowski.
Okay. I used to live in that neighborhood, so I know what you're talking about. And I'm the one that brought up about not having another park simply because the party, the city is overloaded and can't handle another park. But, you know, otherwise, if we could handle it, I wouldn't matter. But right now, I know that Jeff doesn't have enough help and so it really overburdens the system. The other thing is, Josh, do the guys stop the kids from jumping off those piers? I get a lot of calls and I know a lot of people that are begging down there.
They try to, but it's difficult. I mean, we did our school safety presentations in the school and you'd be amazed all the hands that went up, including adults as they jumped off the pier. So, my direction, I've given them, is absolutely to be out there and educating them if we can't sign them. Unfortunately, it's dug its way into our culture. We're trying to root that out for safety purposes.
We don't have any signs down there telling them not to jump over, do we?
Signs that say, "Don't jump off the pier"? I don't think we do.
I don't ever remember us having anything down there.
We have never had it, but it's actually a cultural phenomenon right now. It is the thing to do. It's going to be like stopping a wave coming on, breaking down the beach without having, I mean, it's not worth putting somebody on the pier. But it's, it's a hurdle to even expect that to happen.
We were fortunate to get the schools last year to educate all the kids about the danger of jumping off the pier. But I was certainly surprised when I saw all the hands go, "Kids and adults, don't jump off the pier." So, we're going to continue our efforts.
I know a lot of the women that lay down there and my wife do, they tell me about these kids jumping off.
Yeah. My grandson's livid. He can't do it. He's just mad at a white hornet who went there. You know, because all of his friends are doing it, so.
But you take him, right down here on water, the water and river come together. There's a yield sign. Have the guys cut the branch off that's up there because it's blocking the sign.
The police?
Yeah. As Jeff, Jeff worked together.
I think we could probably make the app with short.
But if your sign gets, gets off.
I'm pretty sure we can make the app for a short.
Yeah, because I wrote down there one day. And Jeff, you're not doing anything with that clock. That's the DDA, right? With the clock down there.
The clock repair order has been approved and is sent to the clock company that may manufacture that clock. So, we're expecting them to be here within the next three days.
Okay. People keep asking me. Oh, Jeff, another thing. Did you happen to go by on Arthur Street and get into that dip? It's really getting worse since I talked later last night.
Yeah, I had discussions with them that on that. And as I alerted council before, they plan on reconstructing that roadway, full reconstruction in 2026. So, I've mentioned several of those type of things to them, just things to look forward to when they're doing their design.
I'm going to fall through pretty soon the way that dip is going to get worse.
Kind of checks the shocks on your car.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. I'll let you keep noticing. I'll need to keep notes of it.
Sure. So I do want to apologize for the remarks. They certainly were not planned. However, I do plan on writing an editorial to kind of clarify my position, but it was never my intent to stereotype the residents. But I firmly believe that housing, single-family housing, is more valuable to the city of Manistee than green space.
You're welcome. Ms. Sullivan.
I could. I don't have anything right now.
Mayor, could I? I didn't catch the gal's name on Fifth Avenue who complained about the blight. I didn't catch your name, but I'm wondering if, Chief, you could talk to us about, like, so where, or whoever, where does that complaint go into, and does somebody respond to her? I just would like to understand the process, and I think she would like to, too.
We're gonna find out in about five minutes. I don't know why they did it, but it's publicized which white officers assigned to which area.
Okay.
So I'll be with her to see what her concerns are and see why that didn't happen.
Okay, so someone should have gotten back to her, so it's just kind of a...
Yeah, she reached out to the right person.
Okay.
I'll make sure that's right.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're, we know what to do, and thank you for voicing your concern, because that's how we learn, and that's how we see when we need to do something better. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr.... Sorry, Chief Glass.
Ben it?
That's it.
All right. I don't have anything. Next on the agenda is consideration of a closed session, union contract negotiations. City Manager William Gamble has requested a closed session this evening, as permitted by the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Section 8(c), to discuss contract negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters. At this time, council could take action to proceed to a closed session under Section 8 of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. I adjourn to closed session.
I need to take a roll call vote first. Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
I'll need a motion to go back.
So we're back in open session.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have to, do we have to ask the public?
No, they're all gone. They're all gone. So I...
We open the door, they can come back.
I had a motion. Was that Mayor Protem?
Thank you.
Yes.